Meeting, City Council to order. Everyone who please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the true republic which sustains and which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Row call, please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Present.
Kaiser?
Present.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Okay, if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council, please fill out a green card located in the foyer and present it to the clerk. You will have four minutes to address the council at the end of the meeting. Approval of agenda, are there any corrections or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay. Motion passes. Approval of minutes, are there any corrections or changes to the minutes of the last council meeting in your packets? Hearing none, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the last council meeting and a second.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay. Passes. Mr. Crane, do you have any visitors you would like to introduce?
Not at this time, ma'am.
Okay. Under Communications Requests, informational items, Mr. Crane.
Yes, this week is Economic Development Week and Randy and Kaylee are here from Morley Area EDC for a presentation on that proclamation.
Okay. If you guys would like to step up, please.
Oh, you gotta get in it, Kaylee.
Certified economic development organization. Destination in honor of renewalism professionals. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs, has to still take growth in hands well and provide us stable access. And whereas economic developers simulate and anticipate renewalism in order to help establish the next generation of new business, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural, urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public price, private, senior congress, universities, and varieties of other industries. And whereas economic developers attract, retain, and high-quality talent, develop value, and improve the quality of life in their region. And whereas economic developers work in city and local industries within each district. Now therefore, I concur, Mayor of the City of Mobile, Missouri, to place May 8th through May 12th, 2023 as Economic Development Week. And remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports standing career opportunities and makes lives better.
Did you get a picture?
Yes.
Also, I have a plaque I would like to present. Mayor Jeffrey.
Is it a gavel?
It is a gavel.
You beat me to it.
Would you like to step down here?
We can do it right here.
Tom, we get that.
So this is addressed to Jerry C. Jeffrey, Mayor, City of Mobile, Missouri, July 17th, 2017 to April 17th, 2023. And I'm not sure who's been mayor the longest, but I would bet you're pretty close to it, if not the longest mayor of our city. But really appreciate all your efforts. I know you've spent a lot of your spare time helping the city out. I noticed our packet today was like 950 pages long. I'm not exaggerating. And I thought, I thought of you, because he's working a full-time job. I'm retired, but he's working a full-time job and he's been able to do this for seven years. Anyway, congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Jerry, did you read all 954 pages?
I'm not gonna answer that question.
I think 800 of them were dispatched from your pages.
It's called speed reading.
I read them, but I had to take three naps. I read them.
Okay, item number three.
Yes, Mayor, the Morley Rotary Club is asking for approval on their 17th Annual Railroad Days. It's gonna be June 14th through the 17th. And for the carnival and staging, vendors, they'd like closure of Sturgeon Street from Coats to Rollins and the east half of the 100 block of West Reed Street, like usual. The parking lot adjacent to the city hall as well. And the road closures are to begin on June 11th to set up for that carnival. And then run through June 18th, Sunday, as usual. And they'd also like permission to hang the banners on Rollins Street and Morley Street Railroad Overpass.
Okay.
And then the additional request of Morley Eagles to operate that beer garden at Depot Park. We've reviewed this and are recommending approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second, we have first and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That request is approved. Yes.
I think they're also gonna have a dunking booth this year and the mayor has to sit in that.
Don't think it would be big enough.
Just FYI.
Wait a second, did you, did you do that last year?
I was sick.
Oh, you were sick, okay.
We can both take turns. Okay, under public hearing and receipt of bids, we have two different bids.
So number one was we have the receipt of bids for the glass bunker, the recycling bunker at the transfer station. We received one bid from DMC Concrete for 15,000, excuse me, 17,395. We'd ask that these bids be accepted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. And then we have one more, is that all right?
Mowing, hay and bid for Omar Bradley Airport. And so we received multiple bids on that, with the highest bid on that being from Jared Embry for 2295 or $51 an acre. And so we ask you to accept these bids.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Say it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Bids are received.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you start on the consent agenda, Chief Ryan would like to update you on one of those items on the consent.
Okay.
Trying to find the number, it's item nine. Number nine. Yes, sir.
Okay, just to give you some further updates on this. Trying to amass quotes for this, the amount that I asked for was $70,000 on that. What I'm finding so far is that I'm probably need to bump that to 75 just to cover for a stationary type. I'm still waiting to hear back from ARSA to get some clarification on which might be the best way to go for the actual grant and what the odds are for either a stationary or a true portable. But if we go to a true portable, you're talking about almost doubling, so it's almost 120,000. So I'm trying to get an idea of what they think might be the easiest or the best way for us to proceed. Right now, what I have found out so far is that if we went with a true portable with the cost that that might incur, the last time they did this, they paid about a 78% of what that total cost was. So if we end up going with a true portable to make the grant more likable, I guess, if you want to look at it that way, then the city might actually have to incur costs. But I haven't got any clarification from her, I'm hoping to hear back from her yet tomorrow. But what this is basically just to give me an idea whether, or to give us permission to go ahead and apply for the grant upfront. And then if there's changes that have to be made, then we'll bring it back towards council before we go any further and we don't have to accept, so.
Would you mind just for the people at home, state what you're, what you're talking about right now?
We're talking about an emergency standby generator to basically be positioned at our second station. And right now, we're looking at a possibility of a full year before you're even gonna get that generator when we order it, if we would get the award. So we're talking down the road here to where the prices, you never know, is gonna possibly go up besides that, so.
Right.
So just wanted to be upfront and bring it to you so that you mull it over and consider, so.
We appreciate that, any, any questions? And I assume this is a natural gas generator?
Natural gas or diesel for a stationary. If it goes to a portable, it'll definitely be diesel, they don't want to quote anything else.
Okay.
And they're really kind of pushing the diesel for the, even at a stationary because of the fact that their history shows that if there is some kind of disaster, one of the first things they lose, according to them, for fuel is the natural gas lines shut themselves off depending on what kind of natural disaster it is. So the diesel would be, actually be more dependable.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Like the chief says, all he's asking for is a resolution to
Correct.
allow them to apply for the grant. If it's not good terms, we still have the flexibility to go or not go, so. I don't see any issue with it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, regarding the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove for discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to read the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Mr. Thompson, please read the consent agenda by title one time.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number R 1444, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with DMC Concrete LLC for a three-sided glass recycling bunker. Resolution R 1445, a resolution approving and authorizing a professional administrative services contract with Mark Twain Regional Council of Governments for an ARPA grant. Resolution R 1446, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Bartlett and West Inc. to provide engineering services for the South Morley Kosher Agreement project. Resolution R 1447, a resolution of the City of Morley, Missouri authorizing a fiscal year 2023 state homeland security program grant application by the Morley Fire Department. Resolution R 1448, a resolution authorizing a listing and marketing commission agreement with Brendely Mountain Fire Apparatus LLC. And resolution R 1449, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with Allstate Consultants LLC.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion on any of those items? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The consent agenda items are approved. Number 12, my understanding, we're gonna table?
Yeah, it's gonna make a motion that we table, item number 12.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Oh, excuse me.
For one amount of time, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
How long do you prefer it to be tabled?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is it definite or to the next meeting?
We're gonna
To the next meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this till next meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. Next one's number 13.
Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement with Central Christian Church Incorporated, ask for it to be read once for consideration of passage.
Do we, do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm sorry, I misstated that, I asked for it to be read twice, an ordinance to be read twice for consideration, my mistake.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Mr. Thompson?
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement with Central Christian Church Inc.
Any further discussion? If not, second reading?
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement with Central Christian Church Inc.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Row call, please.
Brew Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
That ordinance is approved. Number 14.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution approving a mowing and hold harmless agreement between the City of Morley, Missouri and Jared Embry for mowing Omar N. Bradley Regional Airport. Ask to be read once for consideration of passage.
Excuse me.
Twice, need to read it twice.
No, just a resolution. Second, the motion.
Yeah. We got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Mr. Thompson?
A resolution approving a mowing and hold harmless agreement between the City of Morley, Missouri and Jared Embry for mowing Omar N. Bradley Regional Airport.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Resolution's passed. Number 15.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Missouri Department of Transportation for grant funding. Ask to be read for consideration.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? First, Mr. Thompson, first and only reading.
A resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the Missouri Department of Transportation for grant funding through the Bridge Engineering Assistance Program.
Any further discussion? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Resolution's passed. Number 16.
Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Morley, Missouri to pay expenses. I'd ask for it to be read once for consideration of passage.
All those in favor, or excuse me, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favors say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay? First, first and only reading.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the City of Morley, Missouri to pay expenses due between April 15th, 2023 and April 27th, 2023 in the amount of $494,744.89.
Any questions?
Gotta read the disclaimer.
Yeah. Okay, I hereby certify that there is sufficient money standing to the credit of the City of Morley, Missouri unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet requirements of this resolution. Signed Gregory L. Hodge. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay? Resolution passes. Is there anything else to come before the council? Is there anyone that filled out the green cards that would like to come forward? Just one at a time, please. Okay, seeing none. Have a, pardon me?
One tourism.
Yeah. We have a proposal from the Tourism Advisory Commission.
Yes, Mayor, this was a request for Fourth Street Theater. Tom, can you go through that?
This is where the, we received that request for phobia beer fest, our arts movie festival. So they're going to have a couple of locations set up. They'll have some traditional films and then also several films that have been sent in from around the country and other nations even. So they're planning on having that and they requested a thousand dollars on that in scoring it. The tourism specialist, Michelle, scored it at a twenty-six, which is the makes it eligible for the thousand dollar maximum out. And then all the other group members scored it. And so the group recommendation was for the thousand dollars in support for that project.
Okay. Any other questions?
Do I recall that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Do I recall that we already granted a thousand dollars for this with through another organization? Or am I mistaken?
This was the first round, I thought, for this. This is in the work session, I think, we discussed.
Oh, it was work session, or I knew we had talked about the phobia thing.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
I have one question. It's called phobia?
Party.
Will they have any movies about having public speaking phobias?
It's possible, right? And so they have all kinds of different ones.
Can you get like an All Day Pass?
You can buy an All Day Pass.
Thank you.
What was the round for the All Day Pass?
I think that horror show was last week.
Thirty dollars for an All Day Pass.
Okay. Thank you. So, anyone else have any questions? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
That motion is a.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. This proposal is passed. And then number eighteen. Brian, are you going to handle that one or?
Yeah, this is a liaison position for the downtown community improvement district with the council. And I think you all still need to decide what direction you want to go on that.
This is on the Sid, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion that we appoint Jerry Jeffrey on the Sid as an advisory board member.
A second?
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you.
About time he did so. Okay, anything else? If not, I consider a motion to adjourn to work session followed by closed session.
Move to adjourn followed by closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
We've got a row call.
Oh, yeah, row call, I'm sorry, thank you.
Rue Baker?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming to the city council meeting. Now we're open up for a work session. First, under that, number one is a public hearing on twenty-twenty-three proposed property tax rates.
Mayor and council, we published the two thousand twenty-three proposed property tax rates in the Morley Monitor Index. The tax rates were provided to the city by the Missouri State Auditor, Nicole Galloway, and a public hearing is required for the tax levy. We ask that you move this item forward to the May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting as a public hearing.
Okay. Anyone have an issue with this? Thompson, you okay with this?
Yeah.
We don't really need a motion on this, do we?
No.
Okay, so we'll move that forward. Next, number two, receipt of bids for new dispatch furniture and Motorola radios.
Before you get started, did you read the six hundred page that you put in there in our meeting packet? Have you read that yet?
She wrote it. She wrote it. Lots of pictures, though.
Yes.
Can we have like an intermission of the meeting so I could page to it?
So the first one, this is all comes from the application that the police department completed with the Rescue Act Fund through Randolph County. All of these are single source purchases. The first one is the Watson Pro Series Furniture. This is going to be for a three dispatch console unit for a dispatch. As we move further on, this will also house our new radio that we would be getting for our dispatch, which is an MC seven-five-hundred. And the furniture would be for all three of our consoles. The reason that these are a single source purchase is that Motorola was asked for bids just because that's a, we've utilized Motorola for several years. It's a very reliable piece of equipment and we have come to depend on that. And so that's why we've single sourced this out. And as far as the MC seven-five-hundred system, we currently have the MC seven-five-hundred. Therefore, it is very compatible with the ones that we already have. And then the furniture would be compatible with the MC seven-five-hundred equipment that we would be purchasing. So I could go over, the Watson Pro Series Furniture is eighty thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents. The radios would include thirty-five portable radios with the equipment for each of those, and that comes to seventy-three through seventy-seventeen. And then the actual MC seven-five-hundred radio system itself totals out to be, let me see here. I can't read that, so.
Seventy-three, three-seventy?
Uh, it looks like sixty-nine, four-forty, sixty-seven. I would like to add that these items, that Randolph County did hire consultants and they were able to negotiate us the best price through Motorola with these. Have any questions?
Mr. Jeffrey?
So this is police and fire radios, correct? Or is that just the police total?
I know that the police department had ordered thirty-five. I'm not sure what the fire department has ordered. Chief Ryan?
They did, but it was on their own.
Okay, so that's not on this number?
It is not. This was just before the police department.
And I think that was already approved. Yeah, last month, one month. Yeah.
I just was looking at how it was listed on the agenda, but maybe I read it wrong.
It's a little confusing.
Other questions? I just had one question. I can't remember, I think it was on page seven-hundred-and-eighty-three, but the layout of how you're going to put these, the three workstations in, is there going to be like a separate workstation if, like if you ever have a supervisor or someone in charge of that, that department in the future? Will there be enough room for that or?
So the way it would be set up, there would be three individual dispatching units within our current dispatch center. So we would be adding just one additional position to that.
Okay, so there won't be like a desk for?
There will not be any individual desk or any further equipment.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone okay moving that forward? Yep, okay, we'll move that forward. Next is number three, application for rezoning lots ten and eleven, block nine, Williams second edition.
So can I speak on the next three items together? They're all kind of linked.
Okay.
So you have rezoning is are the first two items of the lots, and so there are, the R-three PD, and the purpose of that is is they're wanting to do a plan development which will have little tighter densities, as you can see, and there, we changed on the left side, the six lots, used to be five lots, so a little tighter densities, which are part of following back to our recommendations from our housing study we had about four years ago, trying to achieve tighter densities. And on the left side, or excuse me, on the right side, there are the two lots are the former power station, used to be down there on the end by our parking lot. So they are, we've cleaned that off and we received that back from M and E. So that will allow eight new lots in there. And as part of that, by getting the tighter densities, they've worked with the church next door. There are two lots that are just south of the six lots there that you don't see, and they've met with the church and they're written a partnership together and they're going to have a, build a shelter house in there that can be used by the church and they'll have power to it, they can lease it out, and also the tenants, the occupants of that housing development will also be able to use that green space and the shelter house in there. So it's a nice community effort where they're working together with the local churches. P and Z has reviewed it and recommended approval of the zoning change to the R-three PD for the locations and the replating to adjust for the lot sizes.
Okay, any questions? Everyone okay moving that forward? Okay, we'll move that one forward. Thank you, Tom.
And that was for the, did you do that for all three? So that move all three forward?
I'm sorry, yes, move all three forward. Number six, discussion regarding Morley Detention Basin Project.
Yeah, Dana's got these next two.
Morley has one of six EDA projects, that's the Economic Development Authority projects. This is for the detention basin that's on the north side of town between MFA and Swift. I mean, it was agreed upon a few years ago to enlarge the size of that basin to better handle the increased stormwater flows. And the project came in at one oh four, which was slightly more than the original estimated amount, and the EDA is seeking to have documented Morley's commitment to that balance, and that's what this represents, so that they can move forward with awarding the bid and beginning the project.
Okay. Mr. Jeffrey?
So if I read this right, then EDA is going to pay this higher amount?
The project's, the project's going to be awarded at a higher amount. They want to have Morley's commitment to paying the balance as part of the overall EDA project, and the EDA grant of four-point-six million. Morley's saying, we will pay the extra twenty thousand dollars over the original estimate for them to move it forward, but it remains to be seen in the sum of the six projects how it all falls out. So I can say, yes, Morley will have to cough up the nineteen thousand, but it really waits until all six of them have been awarded to see how they shake out.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't give you a guarantee yes or no on that. I apologize.
Any other questions? If not, everyone okay with this one moving forward? You okay with that? Okay, we'll move that one forward. Thank you.
Very good.
Next one, are you up on that one too, huh?
Yeah.
I am. This is a scope of service with BAR Engineering. Morley was awarded an ARPA stormwater grant to upgrade the Seven Bridges Road CSO basin and to be able to return flows to the lift station to capture more flows, and this is awarding the engineering services to BAR. And this is eligible for reimbursement through the ARPA.
Okay, questions? If not, everyone okay moving this one forward?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move it forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else under the work session?
Yeah, you got a park board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Get to that, what page is that on, Jerry?
Four hundred and seventy-three.
I don't even see a page.
Four seventy-three, no problem. So we have park board appointments.
Yes, Mayor, we have currently three openings coming up. Two of the three current members will, are not seeking reappointment. Kay Harris is seeking reappointment, and there are five other applicants in your packet.
So we have five applicants plus Kay.
Mm-hmm.
Total of three spots. Yes. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, first of all, thank Kay Harris for her, for her service and would like to recommend her reappointment to the, to the Morley Park Board. Thank you so much for your dedication and we look for more of that. I'd also like to recommend John Meistrick and Zach Richardson.
Can I use that a motion?
It's a recommendation.
We usually just try to get consensus and move forward.
Everyone okay on that?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I would recommend Kay, John, and Betty Hunt, the first three. Kay Harris, Betty Hunt, and John Meistrick.
It looks like we don't have a consensus at this time.
We have a majority.
Yeah.
Well.
Anybody else can be corrected.
Yep, we do have.
I don't know what John wants.
John?
We do, John, can you hear us?
Yes.
Mr. Kimmons, did you hear the recommendations?
Yes, I did, and I would concur with Kay Harris, John Meistrick, and Zach Richardson.
Okay, we have a majority. Okay, so those three will be appointed to the park, park board. Thank you all very much. Work session? If not, we'll adjourn and go to closed session. Thank you all for showing up.